All right, it's 5:30. It's time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks to all that are in attendance tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. We have several things to cover tonight. First of all, the adoption of the agenda. I understand there has been one item that has come to a slate that will be added, actually added to the consent agenda, and it's item F.
Is it? No.
No, it adds to the items for commission action.
For commission action.
Oh, for commission action, excuse me. Have you had a chance to look at the agenda? And are there any questions about that?
I have none.
I have none. Okay. So I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Going to old business appointments. I understand on the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, we have two positions on the P&amp;Z that are open, and the applications are due January 17th of 2020. Any of you that are interested in serving on that board, you still have several days to apply for that, and we're looking for people to come and be willing to serve and be part of the process. So consider it, and you can go online for an application and fill one out if you're interested. Also, on item two, on the tree board, we actually have three terms that are coming up, and those applications are also due January 17th of 2020. So if you're considering getting involved in city government and want to start, that would be a good place to start. So I encourage any of those out that are here in attendance or watch this meeting later to please apply. Item B, consider the minutes of November 14th, 20th, December the 5th, 12th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th of 2019 meetings. And we've already got that. There's no questions on those. And we're moving into item...
We need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve those minutes. And I make the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm excited to get to this next part. That's what I was looking at all along, sorry. New business, and tonight, we have a presentation of a plaque to Gary Hogsett for his service as city commissioner from August 2014 to January 2020, and his service as mayor from February 2016 to January 2017. So I'm excited to be able to have Gary here in attendance, and this plaque. Gary, I will present this to you. All ready? And it says here, Gary Hogsett, "In appreciation for your dedicated years of service and your initiatives to make Independence a better place to live during your term as mayor and city commissioner." And this presented by commission. Thank you, Kelly. Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. We appreciate you serving on the commission as mayor. We appreciate all you do, all you've done for the community, and that you will continue to do. And I'm still looking forward to Dickey's opening.
Good, good, I hope so.
So it's not too far down the line.
I need you there once a month.
Okay, I'll make a reservation. All right?
All right, thanks.
All right, Gary.
I will turn over my seat.
All right, item B, it's reorganization of the commission. Item one, we have an oath of office for Dean Hayes, who is the newly-elected city commissioner. He will be serving a four-year term, and Louis Sissi, who has been re-elected to serve a two-year term. And Dean, please step forward. Give him a hand.
I solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner...
Faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner...
So help me God.
So help me God. Bless you.
Welcome aboard, Dean. Dean, have you seen up here?
No. Dean, you need to get some...
Okay.
Right here? I solemnly swear...
I solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner...
And faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
So... Best I can do under the pains and penalties of perjury. So help me God. So...
Okay, I said affirm, yes.
Okay. So best I can do under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes. I agree.
Okay. All right? Good enough?
I watched a rerun of the meeting two years ago when we did this, and he talked about him forgetting what it was he was supposed to say when they were repeating that, and that kind of crossed my mind as I stood up there like...
I thought you were going to do it together.
Yeah, sir, what I was going to do. All right, next on the list would be the election of mayor, and I move to nominate Leonard Kaflish as mayor. And do I have a second? I second it. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Leonard Kaflish, you will be mayor. And item three, election of vice mayor. I move to nominate Dean Hayes as vice mayor, and that's the motion I make, and I second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Dean, you will be vice mayor. So welcome, gentlemen, both of you. You keep looking at me.
Well, you made the motions and you seconded it, so we might need somebody else to...
Second it.
Just for the record.
Okay. Well, I was waiting for someone to second, and no one did, so I jumped in.
I'll second the motion for Dean.
I'll second the motion.
Can you second the other motion?
Okay, okay. Well, I paused, and no one stepped up, so I went with the flow, so, okay.
We forgot to rehearse.
Do we switch now, or...
Yeah, you can, certainly.
That way, change the name tags too, so Louis can still be Louis. I don't think he wants to become Leonard. The next item would be to designate the official newspaper for the city. And do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we designate the Independence Daily Reporter as the official city newspaper.
I second it.
If you have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Need to designate a official depository, want to be careful with the word, for the city funds. So do I have a motion?
I move to designate this community national bank as the official city depository. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Adoption of the date for official meetings. We have a schedule that's been submitted. Commissioners, have you reviewed it?
Yes.
Yes.
There was one recommendation regarding Wednesday, October 21st, and Wednesday, November 18th, to delete these to avoid meetings in two days in a row. What's your pleasure on that?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, not to have two meetings back to back.
Because if we need a special meeting late in the month of November or October, we can always call for a special meeting.
Indeed.
So then, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to adopt the city commission meeting schedule as presented.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion concerning a consent agenda?
I move that we adopt this consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Items for commission action. Item one, consider a resolution to rescind condemnation action for the property located at 1701 North 10th Street, the Garden Walk Apartments. David?
Mayor, as you know, we've been working with Garden Walk for quite a while in the process and with the insurance companies, and I'm happy to report that in December, they completed the project, and they received occupation from the City of Independence by inspections of the building department and the fire EMS department. They then went through a HUD process, which slowed us down a little bit, but in order to complete this now and clear it so that they can begin to rent the property, we need to do this process and return back the money that we held in case we had to demo the property.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution rescinding a previous resolution which set a hearing date to consider condemnation of 1701 North 10th Street and authorize the release of funds being held for possible demolition of the property.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, consider a proclamation declaring January 19th, 2020, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. commemoration day. Kathy, would you like to address the commission?
Sure. (inaudible) Thursday, April 11th, we were saying, would you?
You may.
Okay. We are asking that the city commission adopt this proclamation in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. Our celebration in Independence is on January the 19th. We would ask all the commission to join us in that celebration. It begins at 3 o'clock. We have lots of activities planned. It's a wonderful celebration if you haven't attended, and so we hope that you will consider the proclamation in adopting that.
Okay. Any questions concerning the proclamation for Kathy?
No, I have none.
If there's no question, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to proclaim January 19th, 2020, as Martin Luther King Jr. commemoration day and authorize the mayor to sign that proclamation.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And with that, I'd like to read the proclamation. Proclamation 2020 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas the 15th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood, and whereas the citizens of Independence do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all God's children. Now therefore, I, Leonard Kaflish, mayor of the City of Independence, do hereby proclaim the day of January 19, 2020, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. commemoration day, and urge that every citizen of Independence join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind by attending the local celebration, King's Vision, humanity tied in a single garment of destiny, on Sunday, January 19, 2020, at 3:00 p.m. at the Independence High School Performing Arts Center. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Independence, Kansas, to be a fix this day, January 9, 2020. Thank you for your work in preparing for the celebration. We really appreciate and look forward to the luncheon at 2:00 and the celebration at 3:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consider change order number three for $20,610.70 for the 1916 City Hall Phase One project regarding additional needed roofing repairs. Okay. I believe this is what we discussed at the last commission meeting was regarding, and as the photographs indicate, masonry parapet damage...
Right.
That was found when the existing roof membrane was removed. Are there any questions regarding the work in this change order?
I have none. No, I think the pictures and what he explained and what we had talked about pretty well broke it down, and it was something they didn't actually find until they were in the process of roof replacements, so...
The work's necessary to complete the roofing project.
Yeah, to get a warranty for the way the roof is being installed, it extends up the parapets, and there's nothing to anchor to that's substantial that wouldn't cause it to release later on, so this is definitely a requirement that we need to proceed with. So if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve change order number three in the amount of $20,610.70 for the 1916 City Hall Phase One project regarding additional needed roof repairs.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider updating the sewer cost share program.
Terry, why don't I go and present?
Terry?
Yeah, I thought Lacy was going to be here, but apparently not. We started looking at this recently. The cost of these sewer repairs has gone up dramatically since this was put in place, and we thought maybe it would be a good time to look at this, what the city contributes to try and help these people get their sewer lines and other deficiencies taken care of. This is directly related to our INI reduction in our sewer system.
Now, through the development of the city, there were crossconnections of storm drainage to sanitary sewer, plus the age of sanitary sewer that has caused INI or infiltration into the system of rainwater.
Yes.
I don't know. One of the things, looking at the original proposal, it only identified two basins, basin 10 and 11 that was eligible for the share, cost share program. This will open it up to citywide?
Yes, we've opened it up citywide several years back. Originally, 10 and 11 was the first two basins we studied and did this in, and then we've opened it up citywide several years ago, but the language has never changed, and...
Looking through it, and I'm not sure the other commissioners have questions also, but the application of the program has wording leading to maybe an understanding of residential, but it doesn't say that it's not applicable to commercial property. Is this desired to be just residential, or is it going to be open to all commercial property also?
I believe we've done some commercial in the past on, like, stairwell drains going down in, I believe, St. Andrews Church. At one time, we did some work with them to uneliminate some problems. So geared more toward residential, but I believe we've done commercial.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, you know, you look, the nature of the commercial business is a little different than residential, and I don't know, is it opening up that broad? You know, are we looking at more costs? I guess we just have a limit to the program, whether it be $10,000, or 15, or 3. We set our limit at $4,000 for...
Low income.
Low income.
Right.
And how would, that would be excluded then on commercial projects?
Yes.
Inclusion of low income? So it'd be limited to $2,000 for them?
$2,000, yes.
What about the residential? Is it going to be open to rental property also?
And that's based on the income of the landlord, not the tenant of the rental property.
Okay. Is it going to be limited on the number of property for a landlord, or is it available?
One time per year.
One per year?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
So I'd need to be caught up to some degree on this program. So if you wouldn't mind, this question came to mind, and that is that this program was originated in 2004, am I right?
Yes.
That was the first time. Was that the timeframe of the original study as well?
The study was prior to that, within a couple of years prior to that, yes. We did a lot of study...
So we identified INI at that time as a significant problem for the water treatment plant?
Waste water treatment plant.
Waste water treatment plant?
Continues to be.
And it continues to be?
Yes.
So the problem of INI continues to be significant for wastewater treatment? So the review of this particular cost portion of the program has not been reviewed since 2004?
No, it has not.
Is that, would you agree that periodic reviews of the cost of this program, or the benefit side of the program should be reviewed regularly?
Yes, I do.
More than, more than once every 15 years?
Yes.
What would you think?
Probably over two to three years. I think it should be reviewed, and...
Yeah. So I would agree that part of the, part of the agreement itself, or what we're agreeing on this evening, might be a review interval of three years to bring it back before the commission at that time to see whether it still aligns with cost.
I think that would be good.
Then another, okay. Then another question is, how do you measure, or what do you use in terms of measurement to see what the program is doing in terms of being successfully implemented?
That is a hard one. We haven't done any major studies of the system since this study was done, and that's something that I was going to be talking to you about in the near future.
Good. I look forward to that conversation. So you're talking about maybe introducing another program of study for INI so that we can see where the, maybe the problems exist?
Yes.
Knowing that, then we could encourage the residents and businesses in those areas where we seem to be having a lot to take advantage of this program.
Where we're having the largest problems and work from the worst spots in town and work our way out from there.
That makes a lot of sense.
The biggest problem with INI is within our own system, manholes, sewer mains, so...
Yes, it is.
And that's the reason it's hard to monitor. This is basically dealing with the residential service line that one would collapse, or crossconnections...
An article I read the other day put a figure on the residential INI at probably 17% contributing to the INI. So you're...
17% of the total INI, but...
Right.
That's probably a small percentage of the total INI from our manholes, so really to...
Manholes are a big contributor, and these are all things that I was going to be discussing with you, like I say, in the near future.
Yeah. Well, that's, we're kind of looking at the program going along with what Dean said with the study. We were looking at like $20,000 for the repair cost and $35,000 for the INI study, so the two tie, kind of tied together, but we spent a lot of money on some surveys, some camera studies, and other studies. Do we need to do more study until we've solved the problems that we know that are there? So should we be devoting more money to actually repair the sewer line at this time than retaining money for a study, or even considering a study?
When I say study, I think it would be money well spent to do, to televise lines and figure out what condition they're in. I mean, there's no sense digging up a perfectly good line just because we think it's bad. And looking at that, and maybe some smoke testing, which is not a real expensive way to figure some problems out.
Was it basin five or basin one that we did camera monitor... Was it basin five or basin one that we did camera monitoring, what, two or three years ago?
Five, and we did a-
Basin five.
A very large rehab project in that basin, and we're getting ready to do the second half of it. And then we were gonna, my suggestion was look at basin two. It goes to Wald Lift Station, and we seem to have a huge problem there.
Well, I wonder, you know, you mentioned looking at the effectiveness of it, if this is a budgeted item, maybe during time of budget or strategic planning, we look to see how many projects are actually being funded from the program. That might be one, one way that we keep it before us, and not for sure how many people in the public understand that the money's available, and it's, by doing that, it's a good way to, and looking at the low income, helping the households more in that range than, you know, on rental property, you're looking at an income, and it's a little different market than if you're living there and trying to make ends meet, so, you know, I could see reaching the elderly, the low income primarily, and-
Yes.
And even, you know, if you, if we're doing a major rehab along one of the mains, that would be the time to look at the service lines coming from the house, tying those in at the same time. Is smoke testing something that your crew can do, or do you have to bring a consultant in?
We can do the majority of it. It's having enough staff to go around is the issue.
So during the design phase, you probably could just have that one line smoke tested as a design, and then notify the residents that it's going to be available, should there any leaks be determined in their service lines?
I don't understand your question.
Okay. In the, in the program, it talks about notification that there's a problem for the people to address the issue.
That was originated from the study we did and all the defects that were noted, and we eliminated several hundred, that's all I did for about three years, was eliminating the private source INI, and was probably the most hated individual in town at that point in time. We did, we inspected properties and went through and made them bring everything up to code. But we don't have the staffing at this point to keep that up.
So it would be tied better to the engineering design phase to do that one branch or that one main, everything tying in along that? Okay. Maybe that's deviating beyond what we were talking about, the sewer cost share, but I think understanding the program and what we're trying to accomplish is something we need to be aware of.
I was hoping Lacy would be here. She had the numbers on utilization of the program last year. I believe we expended close to all the money that was in the budget.
Well, I have some of those numbers from Lacy here, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but it looks like the private fund that was set up for private was nearly entirely consumed.
Yes.
But the fund that was set up under the public account number, $35,000, had no expenses against it.
Right.
So the majority of the money was unspent. So that really was prompting my question about how do we measure effectiveness? Because if the program was actually established with a goal in mind of reducing INI, and it was deemed important that this money was utilized by the residents of Independence to help them solve this problem and collaborate with them on solving the problem, then you would expect that one of the goals would be to get all that money spent, because it has a, it has a positive economic, economic value for the city of Independence, to get it all spent and get all these problems fixed.
The, the public side of it, the $35,000 is there for televising and smoke testing, and we have not utilized that in the last couple of years. We've been working on basin five and getting it completed.
So it's more of a lack of manpower, that's why that money still hasn't been spent? You just don't have the personnel available to do that? And as far as the residential, they've used up pretty much the $20,000 that was put into the fund?
Yes.
Okay. At $2,000 maximum per project, then $20,000 is 10 houses or 10 individuals. So how many houses are there? There's a lot. There's a lot more than 10 in Independence. So probably a lot more houses need help, and so-
Yes.
It might be worthy, at least in my mind, to consider how those monies might be distributed from year to year, depending upon how many applications are received and how many, how much work can be accomplished.
But then we can separate out the testing as a separate project, or tie it in with the scope of repair and change so that all $55,000 could be used, since testing is dependent on manpower and the need is still there to control INI, and it can be rolled into a project cost, the testing along the line, so then we can accomplish more with the same amount of budgeted money.
I would support that. I would support rolling it all into one package and not differentiating it.
It's, it would seem to explain the program, as you look at sewer cost share program, and then find the majority of the money is for testing, then how does that relate to a program to address INI? That if it's going to be a program to benefit the public, to help them eliminate their INI issues, then the program should be just for that. Testing should be tied in with, with projects or another, another line item, or another task.
I would disagree with that.
So as we're reworking the cost share program, if that would be agreement for the commission, we could ex the, the INI study from it, and, you know, we, even the amount can be modified. So, you know, if you, we want to look at the revised cost share program of being 55,000 totally to be used for addressing INI projects, then-
That sounds good.
Yeah, I would, yeah, because we, that will tie into the money that we've set aside to make improvements for, for line down the road, so that'll help us identify what's going to piggyback onto that project once we start replacing sewer lines and the nature of that.
So, yeah, I would suggest that we combine the two accounts ongoing and just call them the INI funds.
And I noticed the social security number was requested on the application. Is that mandatory? That if, I don't like giving my social security number out anymore, so if, if an applicant says, "I don't want my social security number out," the risk of it being exposed, will they be excluded from the application?
We use that to look, look up to see if they've had bad debts with the city. We've had, you know, a number of problems where people sign up for water service and then move around, or sign it to somebody else's land in the house, that type of thing, so we pretty much require the social security numbers for those purposes.
So if somebody submitted it and you do initial search, and there's no question they could get by without the number, or is the application going to be rejected without the social security number?
I don't know if the application will be rejected or not, but I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
They would at least qualify for the lower amount. If they, you know, if they didn't want to give the information so we could verify that they income qualified, then they would just qualify for the lower amount.
Okay. With the, the identity fraud, the securing of your social security number is much more caution, and so I just wondered how that would be perceived.
It is collected when they set up their water accounts, too.
I didn't get mine, but you know.
He probably had it a long time now, so.
Yeah.
Well, I had a number of questions regarding the application process myself. One of the things that is not unusual for governance is that it has maybe unnecessarily complicated processes, and to keep an eye out for just bureaucratic hurdles that might interfere with the goal of what we're trying to achieve here, which is to activate the citizens to fix their sewers. So when I was looking at the application, it looked to some degree like it was a little more complex than it needed to be, was asking for income data, not only the applicant, but of, but everybody in the household, whether they were related or not, and those kinds of, that depth of information might be a hurdle for a low-income person to gather, let's say, I'm just going to say it's complex for them, the income information for multiple people, to gather all of that. And so whether it was really beneficial to the city because of the complexity of the application, and then the need to prove to a significant degree that you're low-income enough to qualify for the additional monies, whether a single, a single value would just be established for everyone, and remove the complexity of application. Everybody get one value or the other, no matter who you are. That would dramatically decrease the complexity of the application, the research associated with the application, the problematic behaviors that have been indicated that are associated with people trying to cheat on the application, and simply make it one value and one, one applicant, and, and simplify the whole process. That's why I asked the questions earlier that I did with regard to social security numbers of non-applicants, names of non-applicants, the nature of the landlord-tenant, you know, relationship, those kinds of things that are part of the application process, that I thought, how is that fixing the sewer line? To know all of that. And I just didn't think it was particularly important. What we really want is we want the sewer line fixed, the sewer issues fixed, the INI issues fixed.
If you set a single amount, do you want to have the highlighted text still in there that somebody that is low-income could apply to have more funds if approved by the commission?
You're talking about this amount can be exceeded by the approval of the city commission if the applicant meets?
And it's on-
So we look at it, so what does that say, that the commission would look at them on a case-by-case basis for low-income situations?
Yes, and then they, we would have to gather the information to verify their income to determine that they were low-income, to exceed that, but we have had that happen in the past. Some of these, well, one, recent one that we've looked at, I mean, connecting to the sewer, it was $10,000 for.
Okay.
And-
So even at a $4,000 benefit from the city, $6,000 could be much more than a, a low-income person could afford.
Absolutely. And that issue, that latitude, but you would need to gather that information in order to make that determination if they were truly low-income.
But the, but it would limit, eliminate a lot of time of reviewing and application to do that.
Yeah, the other application.
To just have a set value, and, and those cases do it on a case-by-case basis, if it comes to commission and-
I'm, I'm willing to do that, to simplify it for the other 90% of the applicants, perhaps.
Then the question would be, what amount do you want to set for everybody?
That goes back to my original question, how effective is it, and, and is $2,000 enough of an incentive to get people to participate in it? Or do they, is it really the $4,000 amount that is the real, you know, that's where the, the incentive really becomes significant?
Well, for that, I guess what we're primarily looking at with the large amount is to cover service line replacement from the house to the main.
Yes.
Well, we've got a plumbing board that has licensed plumbers. Maybe we take to them a recommendation on it, what a typical installation costs to replace a service line, and then we come up with a value based upon what, what information they give us.
We could do that. I, I can't tell you what an average cost is. I, I'm not a plumber, and I don't spec those jobs out, so I know they, I've seen them $4,000, $5,000 up to $10,000, $11,000. So it's, it's hard to say.
So not to beleaguer this, Mr. Mayor, tonight's motion was just to look at the pricing or the cost structure, this schedule that's before us here, the proposed maximum amount But I'd like to, you know, if we did move on that all by itself, I would like the opportunity to review this at some point in time, maybe in six months after we've had an opportunity to see how that impacts the activity.
Yeah. If there's specific changes or requests for additional information, we can table.
Okay.
And then we can have it back on the agenda for our next commission meeting. Or we can move and accept it as is, or we can give minor modifications now, so, you know, if, say you're interested in, in reviewing the amount that would be granted, something like that, I think we should probably table it tonight and request for information that would help determine that amount.
Does that require a motion to table it?
It would be better to get a consensus with a motion to table, if that be the desire of the commission, just so we have it on record instead of leave it hanging. So, you know, if, if we're ready to call for a motion, do you have more questions, Louis, or?
No, no. I think I'm in favor of tabling this, and then coming back and reviewing it later.
If, a suggestion, if it's the pleasure of the commission to table the action tonight, that we submit questions to, additional questions to, to Kelly, that she can have answered and available, the information available prior to the meeting, our next commission meeting, so that we could take action then. So, you know, I'd say, you know, a motion to table would cover our submitting questions during the next few days, so-
I can, I can make that motion now, if you please.
Okay, if we're ready, then I'll call for a motion. Okay, if we're ready, then I'll call for a motion.
I move we table the action to approve the updated sewer cost share program resolution until the next city commission meeting.
If you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider scheduling a work session on February 19th at 9:00 AM to review the scope of work for Phase Two of the water treatment plant project.
I'm available on that day.
You are?
I am available on that day.
I am too.
Okay. Okay. So any further discussion or if we're all available, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we move to schedule a work session on February 19th, 2020, at 9:00 AM to review the scope of work for Phase Two of the water treatment plant project.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the five-year capital improvement plan for the municipal airport. It's a return from, um, action that was taken, um, was it the December?
Yeah, it was December 12th.
The December 12th meeting. There's been some suggested modifications by the FAA and with that I'll turn the presentation to Mike and Mike.
Okay.
Are you guys brothers?
Are we? Okay, I'll just clarify.
Mike and my other brother Mike.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look this over or not.
It's my understanding that this is just a revision of the approved motion in, at the December 12th meeting with looking at scope of work and some of the monetary values have been adjusted.
That's correct.
How much increase in total project cost was there?
I don't have those figures. Did we get that from Matt, Kelly?
Um, we have a summary here that he provided. And we just got this today. It was, we'd submitted to the FAA and then they made some suggestions and then Matt was gone over the holidays and, and so we just got back the revised amounts today. And a lot of it is just combining the projects and some of that, the way the FAA wanted it packaged. So it kind of seems like it's essentially the same work, it's just packaged differently.
It's the same work.
Therefore approximately the same total project cost.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. And move two projects out a year.
Was, the only thing that, that there might have been additional on that was signage. They talked about that all the signage out at the airport needed to be replaced.
All the directional signs. And I haven't heard anything back from Matt on that other than what we have right here.
Okay, was that part of the original project?
Uh, was rehab of some signs, I believe it was.
This looks like it's rehabbing the entire.
All of them.
All of them. So that would be an additional, would be some additional cost involved in that.
And he's getting, he's getting the numbers together on that as we said.
Okay.
And that'll be added to, I forgot what year they were going to move that to 2025, I believe.
Okay.
And we'll know the numbers on that when they, when they get them to us.
So as far as increase, that was probably the only.
That'll be the only increase.
The only increase considering what we had looked at it on December.
Originally, correct.
December 12th, okay.
And it's still a 90-10 split, so.
Okay.
Potentially by combining projects to do a less total number of projects, we will be saving in overhead and profit or.
Yes, you will.
Bonding and.
Whole nine yards.
Maybe a little bit in engineering fees too.
You will.
But it won't show up at this point.
Not yet.
Until we get into it, so.
Letting process, yes.
But our basic dollars that will be committed from the city will remain the same except for.
Except for the signage, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the reason we're acting on it so quick is we've got a January 15th deadline and this, the changes were recommended by FAA. So to keep in line with their pleasure.
Yeah, just spending 90% on this. Help out a little bit.
So, okay.
Are you ready for a motion?
Further questions? Entertain a motion.
I move to authorize city staff to sign the revised five-year CIP for the Independence Municipal Airport and submit it to the FAA.
Second?
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item six, reports, report on 223 West Main Street update.
Uh, Mayor, as you know, the state fire marshal turned this back to the City of Independence. They rejected the 223 main application because the plan had not been approved and it had been changed from an IBC to an IEBC and it has now came back to the City of Independence for a review of that. And Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to talk to, with the discussion and update the commission as to what has been discovered with this.
Yeah, the fire marshal said with the extent of the work, the international existing building code, the IEBC was not applicable and it was correctly identified in the original submittal as the 2012 edition, but the international building code. So that was the code that the building work was designed. That was what it was reviewed at for permitting. The permit was issued based on the 2012 international building code. So that's relevant for the project since work not only had been commenced, but the extent of the work that was completed was a basic reason that consideration of the international existing building code was not, not relevant. So, um, been looking at the, the differences in the two codes to make sure and, and visiting, uh, to make sure the next step is, is correct for the project. So that's kind of where I think we were, were at, that we've ready to, um, complete the evaluation to move forward.
So that, that is the next step. The city will do an evaluation and determine.
Well, just to summarize.
Okay.
Get the information we still need. Um, the, the items identified in the fire safety prevention plan, review by pool fire protection, those need to be responded to. It'd be the, the next step.
Have we received the, the updated revision, the revised plans, the MEP plans?
We've received a revised plan, but it's under the existing building code.
Yeah.
Is what they revised to, which is what the Fire Marshal Office rejected, but then realized we hadn't approved it. So it comes back to the City of Independence.
Okay.
And I think that's what Leonard was trying to say. The building permit was issued under the IBC and now it's at the IEBC and there's just a lot of issues now.
And there were some modifications during construction that were indicated on the code footprint for the one that was just received that had both codes referenced. So it needs to go, the revisions of the floor plan need to go back to the original.
Okay.
Plan to address some issues there. The, the code footprint is basically the summary sheet of the building codes and the fire separation requirements that are to be identified during construction.
How long would that take? You have a review? How long would that take?
We've been discussing the findings the last few days. We're summarizing them and that should be first of the week.
Very good.
It was complicated in that the whole situation is very unique and the, trying to cover all bases so that the, the final decision would, would cover all possibilities. So it's been a little different than just initial code review.
So I'm getting up to speed. All possibilities of, of what? Of the code application or of something else?
The, the whole matter with the initial code identified, construction being completed, the possibility of changing codes after the project is near completion, determination of any fire safety issue that might not have been correct initially, re-submittal or submittal of the MEP drawings for the apartments to check code compliance and they're.
So are we, are we operating with an updated drawing set that indicates the current footprint?
We are operating with it. They have provided us a set of MEP, but I think I'm correct in saying, Leonard, that MEP is not what is there. That is some of the issues that we're going to have to send back to them because their MEP is calling for something that is not there and it not qualified under the existing.
And you're saying back to them, back to?
I would assume it, it will go back to their architect and their engineer to resolve our questions that we send back.
Yeah, the MEP drawings that were submitted were not as-built, but they were existing with modifications, but the modifications weren't identified in the drawings. So the drawing, looking at it appears as a as-built drawing, but it's really a corrective action drawing.
I see. Ultimately, we would inspect to an as-built set of drawings. The, the building inspector would finalize the inspection.
See, that's.
Based on the as-built, um.
What?
Understanding that the as-built would have to be compliant.
What, at this point, it's, what needs to be submitted is an as-built with corrections ghosted or noted.
Okay.
So that when you go out, you don't have to trace each line, but it'll say, this part is here, but this part needs to be corrected on the MEP.
Okay.
And, you know, that's like the, the typical, there's a electric riser diagram showing the meter sets and the, and the panels and distribution. There's some little drawings like that that have been left. There's a typical, one typical panel, but where you've got common space and, and tenant space. Common spaces are like the public halls, the stairways. How's that power separated from the tenant so that if one tenant's power shut off, it doesn't shut off other spaces? So, you know, there's some questions in that.
Indeed. I don't, I'm, I'm not asking about that particular per se. I'm just asking, what drawings do we have now and what, what drawings do we need in order for you to get to a final inspection?
Need the, the drawings that are received to note what action has to be taken to correct what work is in place.
And do we have those?
No, we just have the, a basic drawing that distinguishes all things that are existing.
Okay. So, uh, back to the question, how long would that take? Because it's not you or the city, David. It's, it's going to go to the engineer and the architect for those types of revisions.
They're awaiting our response and I've told them either, I don't think we'll make tomorrow, but I, I think we're working to respond by Monday or Tuesday. And then they'll get right back to work on it and get back with us.
Will they give you a timeframe at that point, an estimate of completion?
It's been requested in the past and it's been in question.
I think the owner wants to see what the request is and will determine, probably based on costs, what he, his next step is at that time.
Thank you.
Yep.
So then, maybe this is a question that, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, it was a temporary permit that was granted of six months. And if I'm thinking right, that will expire sometime mid, late April. Is that be correct? So what are the prospects of this? We getting to a point where is, is that, is that in jeopardy?
I don't think it's in jeopardy. I think I would come back to you guys and ask to reauthorize it as long as there is no residences upstairs and they continue to abide, which they are with their fire watches. Uh, they're very, being extremely compliant, that we will continue to work with them.
According to the 2012 IBC, and that's one of the things that was being looked at, it does allow for temporary, temporary partial occupancy and it does state that it is renewable or extend, able to be extended. And I, I think when we initially discussed it, Jeff, wasn't that something you brought out that it is possible to extend?
Yeah, but I also said I'm, this is not my field of expertise. My general impression is that you can extend it.
And it is allowed in the.
Yes.
The 2012 international building code, so.
I think having apartments above would be an issue. We do not have that, so we're good at this point.
Right. So that, that status won't change until there's movement on addressing some of the issues that have already been pointed out. So this could, this will more than likely continue another six months, once the initial six-month period is up?
I mean, it, it's possible. I mean, it, as unfortunately, everything comes down to money and to make these repairs and come into code compliance. I mean, the owner's going to have to make the decision what he can do and what he's, and we'll work forward from there to see where we go with this project.
Okay.
So, but first, we're going to, we will reply back with what, where we're at and what we need from him because we can't take what they have given us because it doesn't even, it's not even showing us what we know is already there.
Okay.
And basically the request that's been made to correspondence by David to the owner hasn't changed.
Yeah.
The first notification and the, the letter that was sent with the fire code safety review from pool fire protection has not changed with the modifications that were done. His was based upon the original design. There's been modifications to the floor plan that could require additional corrections.
Yeah, which I think has been identified by us and the Fire Marshal's office.
Yeah.
Yep. So it isn't us that's, I mean, it's, it was rejected at the Fire Marshal's office too.
Right.
And based upon that, the code wasn't correct. It was an IEBC and it should have been the IBC.
Because that's what the builder signed off on. He agreed to follow 2012 IBC.
Original plans that were submitted was the IBC.
So, um, the responsibility and the delay and for the situation the way it is basically has been and continues to be resting on his shoulders then.
David has responded to the, the requests, the reviews as promptly as could be.
Okay, so we've, we've done everything we can do and it's basically, it's, it's his decision to how he wants to proceed to, to move forward on this. So, so, okay, that pretty well should explain it to everybody out there.
And Kelly and I did sit down with the owner and the architect in about a four-hour meeting, trying to work some of these issues out and they, at that time. meeting, trying to work some of these issues out, and they, at that time, decided to submit what they submitted to us at the existing building code. So we are communicating and we are trying to work with them.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay. Any further questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. No further questions, the next item is city manager's comments.
Yes, we, the planning retreat is the 15th, starts at 8 o'clock at the Country Club and lasts to about 3 o'clock. If Mackie hasn't talked to you yet, he should be contacting you. And also, and then the Chamber banquet is the 28th, and I hadn't heard from, so two for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've heard from the others, so I'll get that taken care of. So those were just some reminders.
Okay. Commissioners' comments?
I don't have any tonight.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I'm excited to be part of the commission, that it's been a hope of mine to be able to participate in the city in this role, and I'm looking forward to getting some work done, so I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Thank you, we're excited to, to see things going forward and your input and your review. Next item, public concerns, do we have any, David? Okay, with that then, we will go to executive session, and we have two executive sessions. First, executive session, I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city attorney regarding a legal issue pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exemption, KSA 75-4319B2. Attending the, the session will be the commissioners, the city attorney, assistant city manager, Kelly Passour, Terry Liebarger, and David Callen. And Jeff, how long would you say? 15 minutes, so would you say at 7 o'clock we'll return in session? Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. We're back in session, we need to extend for 10 more minutes. Do I have a motion? I guess I made the motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
There's motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we'll be back in session.
7:10?
7:10. We're back in session. The next item on the agenda is executive session, so I move that we recess for an executive session for review and discussion of city manager applications pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1. Attending the meeting will be the commissioners. The open meeting will resume, what do you think, 20 minutes, 15?
15.
15 minutes, what would be the time then? Open meeting will resume at 7:25. I've got the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We're now back in session, there's no action taken in either executive session, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can we adjourn?
Do I have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we move to adjourn.
Okay.